Councilmember Furman.
Present.
Councilmember Holmes.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Mayor Potem Ramasamit.
Present.
And Mayor Ortiz.
Present, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order.
Can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Furman.
Present.
Councilmember Holmes.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Mayor Potem Ramasamit.
Present.
And Mayor Ortiz.
Present, thank you. Do we have any public comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.
All right, thank you all for joining us. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call please?
Councilmember Furman?
Present.
Councilmember Holmes?
Present.
Councilmember Miller?
Present.
Mayor Protem Ramasamid?
Present.
And Mayor Ortiz?
Present.
Thank you. And today we have an invocation by Pastor Christian Sly from Garden Fellowship Church. Thank you.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you so much for the privilege that we have of, Lord, just gathering together and just looking after our city. God, I ask that you would just give wisdom and prudence, Lord, to City Council and, God, that those and to those that desire to see India grow. So, God, fill them with your Spirit, I ask, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And we have, today, we have a visitor from Reagan Elementary for our flag salute. His name is Vance Johnson, fifth grader. And we have a little bio for Mr. Johnson. Vance is a fifth grader at Reagan Elementary. He is the president of the student council. He currently plays baseball and recently got selected by the USSA, United States Specialty Sports Association, to represent his region this summer at the Space Coast Complex in Florida. Thank you for joining us. Go ahead and lead us.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have a swag bag for him if you would like to present that to him?
Oh, sure. Yeah, put the photo up.
Do you want to stand over here for him?
City Attorney, do we have any reports on closed session?
Good evening, Mayor. We have no items to report out of closed session today.
All right, thank you. Move on to our presentations. We have three presentations today. Would you like, guys like to join me down there? And I believe, so the first proclamation we have is for Building Safety Month. And I believe we have some of our staff here joining us. If you'd all like to come up.
Oh, no, in the middle.
So, our proclamation says, whereas the City of Indio is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas it starts with you, the theme for Building Safety Month 2023 encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Oscar Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Indio, along with the Indio City Council, do hereby designate the month of May 2023 as Building Safety Month in conjunction with the International Code Council's theme of "It Starts With You." And we'd like to present you all with this proclamation here. Would you like to share a few words for our community? About building safety and the work that goes along with it?
I'll let Louis hold on to that. First off, on behalf of our team, thank you, Mayor Ortiz. Thank you, council members, for sharing the importance of what we do every day. The building code allows us to provide awareness and reduce the risk of everyday living for our residents, visitors, and our businesses. In addition, it also helps reduce the risk and mitigate any, any major risk for the city as well. But thank you again for this.
Thank you, and we really appreciate, you know, all the work that goes behind keeping our, our residents safe in all of our new buildings. But also, keep it, you guys have been keeping up with all the growth that we see in our city. And that's a tremendous work, workload that we put on you guys' shoulders. And you guys are able to carry it on really well, so really appreciate your work. So, thank you again.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Sorry, I'm ready to shake your hands.
Oh, and we have a short video for our building department. Or for Building Safety Month. Let's go ahead.
This year for Building Safety Month, the International Code Council is inviting you to join in and make a difference. Together, we can all make our world a safer place. Each year during the month of May, the International Code Council and other organizations come together to educate our communities about building codes and the role they play in keeping us safe every day. Join us to learn how you can take on an active role in building safety at home, at work, at school, even on a global scale. Each week brings a new opportunity to get involved. Week one, building safety starts at home. Everyone should be safe at home. During week one, we'll share ways to protect your home and those you love, including tips for pool safety, fire safety, and winter water safety. Week two, building safety professionals and you. Building safety professionals play a starring role in keeping us safe where we live, work, and play. In week two, we'll introduce you to real building safety professionals and show you how they make a difference in all of our lives. Week three, prepare your community. We never know when disaster will strike, so it's important to know how to stay safe. During week three, we'll show you what communities can do to prepare for natural hazards such as floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, and wildfires. Week four, advocate for your community. During week four, discover ways that you can promote building safety in your community by educating others, volunteering, or advocating for change. Week five, solving challenges together. Building Safety Month wraps up in week five by bringing the world together to solve global challenges such as water scarcity and building resiliency and sustainability in the face of a changing climate. Building safety starts with you. Start your celebration by visiting buildingsafitemonth.org and check out the tools and resources there that will help you make your home, your community, and your world a little safer.
Thank you. And next, we have our second proclamation, which is for National Foster Care Awareness Month. And we have Brianna Miller joining us from the, she's the philanthropy manager for Voices for Children. Thank you. Would you like to share a few words about your work?
Hi, everyone. Thank you to the City of Indio for, for this proclamation this year. Voices for Children is the organization that provides CASAs, or court-appointed special advocates to children in foster care. CASAs are volunteers from the community who are trained and supported by Voices for Children's staff to become advocates and advocate for children in the foster care system. So, we all know that children are in foster care because they've been abused, abandoned, and neglected. Typically, just being in the foster care system can cause additional trauma, being separated from siblings, changing schools and, and homes frequently. So, a CASA is really just that stable, consistent adult presence that can make sure that their needs are being met in the community. And we can't do the work that we do without the support of, of cities like Indio that have been a consistent support for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your, the work that you do with our, with our foster parents and foster kids. And thank you to all the foster parents out there who commit so much of their lives to raising a kid, a child that's not theirs, right? As their own. That's really, just really inspiring to see all the foster parents out there and the work that they do with our community. And, you know, just, I, I just think it's such a crucial part of our community. When kids don't have the parents there, we know how many problems can come from that in our community, the impact it has on our community. And so, seeing the great work that's done by our foster parents, it's just really inspiring, and we would really appreciate all that work. And so, our proclamation today says, whereas the, the month of May is recognized as National Foster Care Month in the United States, whereas Voices for Children was founded in 1980 and is committed to the belief that every child in foster care deserves a safe, caring, and permanent home, whereas Voices for Children's Court-appointed special advocate CASA volunteers advocate in court, advocate in court, in schools, and in the community for the best interests of children in foster care and are exemplary, exemplary role models and volunteer mentors for children who have been, who have abused, neglected, and abandoned who are living in Indio. And whereas the City of Indio is committed to recognizing and honoring those individuals who advocate for the best interests of children in foster care during National Foster Care Month. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Oscar Ortiz, Mayor of the City of Indio, along with the Indio City Council, do commend Voices for Children CASA volunteers for their outstanding dedication and commitment to our city's children during National Foster Care Month. So, thank you so much. And we have a third proclamation for our employee for the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, Enda Rodriguez. And I know our council members know Enda very well, so I'd like to see if you guys want to share any words?
She was here before me.
You know, I have known you a lot of years. I mean, we sat together at, at Empire Inputting back at the Southwest Arts Festival. What wonderful spirit you have, with such dedication to the City of Indio, to that chamber, to, to small businesses. You have been there, behind the scenes, working, supporting. You've been just such a beacon. I can't say enough about what you have brought to the chamber and to the city. You're a force. You're behind the scenes, making everything move forward. And I can't thank you enough for everything you've done.
Yeah, just, I, I echo the sentiments. And, you know, there's a saying that says, you're praised in public for what you practice in private for years. And you are very symbolic of that. You are part of the base that has gotten us here. And we're at a great place, so as a council member, thank you so much for your continued dedication to our city.
And Enda, I can't say enough. I mean, you've always been there, behind the scenes and front, leading, charging. This chamber, this city would not be as great with the, without your support and your help, not only for the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, but also the Indio, the city as a whole, and our residents, because you continue to always support it. You love this city, and it shows. So, thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you very much for this recognition to City Council Mayor and the City of Indio, the businesses as well. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. My husband said, "Don't cry," but I kind of helped myself, so thank you again.
Thank you so much for your work for our community, for our businesses, and for helping bring Indio such a long way. We're a long way from 30 years ago, so really appreciate you. So, our proclamation reads, whereas Enda Rodriguez worked for the Indio Chamber and the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce for 30 years, beginning her career in 1993. And whereas she served the Indio Visitor Center for many years, greeting tourists from around the world with a kind smile and helpful spirit. She personified the welcoming culture that continues to draw people to the city of festivals. And whereas Enda has devoted three decades of service to our community with tireless support of local small businesses and her promotion of the City of Indio through her remarkable leadership that has always been driven by integrity and compassion. Now, therefore, I, Oscar Ortiz, along with the Indio City Council, do hereby commend Enda Rodriguez for her exceptional service and commitment to the prosperity of the City of Indio.
Also, on behalf of Congressman Ken Calvert, we wanted to make sure you got congressional recognition for the work that you've done, not only for the Chamber of Commerce, but the whole Coachella Valley. You've been a constant supporter of our small businesses, and you're going to be duly missed for all you do. So, thank you, and God bless you.
All right, next on our agenda, we have a report from our Youth Advisory Council. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Frida Riaga, and I'm a junior at Shadow Hills High School. And I'm also Mayor Protem for the Yak Advisory, the Youth Advisory Council. And since this month is the month of mental health awareness, and to honor this, Yak is hosting a mental health walk this Saturday. We placed some flyers next to your seat. And this mental health walk will be this Saturday, May 6th, at 7:30 a.m. We invite everyone here to join us and spend some time with nature. That is all the Yak Cast Report for this month, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ariaga. And that hike's going to be at the Badlands, right?
Yeah, Indio Badlands.
All right. I'll see you out there.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to City Manager Reports and Information.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a shout-out and a thank you for the patience during the festivals. All was successful, and we continue, as Chief Washburn would report, making improvements as we go and dealing with traffic and the other issues that come with the festivals. But we thank the residents for that. The farmer's market goes dark during these warmer months, but will be back in October. And on the 13th, we have our second Saturdays at 6:00 p.m. here on Smurran Mile, just up the street. So, please come out for a free concert, great food and drink on the 13th of May. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our report on City Council External and Internal Board Meetings. Councilmember Holmes?
Well, I'd be remiss if I, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the, the concerts. There's such a, a great economic boon to our community and our city and the Greater Coachella Valley. And it's just always great to, to have, you know, this group, large groups of people in our community enjoying our restaurants. And it, it's just such a great vibe, and it just puts everyone in a great mood, very exciting. Thank you to the Police Department, the Fire Department, staff, everybody involved, for pulling this off because it doesn't happen at the, the level it does without you. And, and just phenomenal, thank you to Golden Voice for another year of really awesome concerts. We had, we had chela here in the downtown. How great was that? I understand there were about 1,000 people. I was kind of, I was here, but I wasn't counting. There were just so many people enjoying, in our downtown, enjoying the grass areas, sort of spilling over into the streets and the other grassy area, enjoying food. That's what we want. We want more of it. Again, thank you, City Manager and Economic Development Staff, and everyone that made that happen. That was very exciting, really great for our city. Let's see what else we have. We attended, along with most of the council, I think all of the council here, the SBDC Economic Conference. And that was just a, a couple of hours of actually very promising information, very hopeful information, and on the economy, on the direction of the economy. And, and, and we look for a, a strong year ahead of us and being able to take advantage of some of that positive, those positive messages. Let's see, just some, some random things. Something very important. I attended the Villa Hermosa Apartments Phase III, along with the mayor. So, when I first came to Indio, there were some farm, they called it a farm labor camp. And with it came challenges. Now, these are the people that worked in our agriculture industry and, and their kids that lived in these block buildings with washing machines outside, no air conditioner often, just really substandard. And over the years, the county, the City of Indio, has worked hard to change that. Villa Hermosa Apartments won. I'll never forget being part of that opening. These are beautiful, wonderful apartments for the people that work 12 and 14 hours a day and put food on our table. This is an environment that allows their children to explore education and everything around it that allow them to, to be that next generation of success. So, it's always wonderful to see when the next iteration of these apartments come up. Phase III came up, is open, and what a wonderful group, what a wonderful organization. And it's just so great to see all the people there that are living and enjoying the benefits of that. And then a couple of other things. Friday is Thank a Nurse Day. So, any of you, for whatever your, your friends, I mean, I know I get my nails done, and I'm always sitting next to nurses. Thank a nurse. Go out of your way, thank a nurse. Because without them in our community, without them into our, in our lives, I don't know where we'd be. They put in an enormous amount of hours. They have a lot of dedication and a lot of heart to care for others. And last but not least, I was at the Coachella Valley History Museum, along with Councilmember Glenn Miller. That, that is just a constant and evolving, beautiful area to have functions and events and to celebrate our history. They have a date grove, an actual working date grove that, that was put together by the Kip family years ago, and it continues to be maintained. And, and they have some beautiful uplighting. So, any of you know of events or dinners or anything of that nature, that's the place to do it. It's just, has this really sort of ethereal, beautiful look to it. And, and it's just really wonderful to see the next iteration of how, how that museum is growing. And Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Holmes. Councilmember Furman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have one commission meeting, and that was the Coachella Valley Energy Commission meeting. And during the duration of the meeting, we did have a, a presentation on a five-year capital improvement plan from IID. And that followed with some very passionate discussion, reason being, a lot of the improvements were taking place in Imperial County. And we all know how the Coachella Valley in Indio does account for upwards of 60% of their revenue. So, there was some passionate discussion there. However, we're continuing to work with IID and other cities on how we could fund our expansion and our current infrastructure in the city in respects to our transmission and distribution needs. We're coming up in the summer months, and I believe it was yesterday, before yesterday, we had a power outage. La Quinta also had a power outage. So, these concerns are very real, and they're today. So, we're still working with IID, our City Manager Consultants, are spearheading this effort to come up with a solution. effort to come up with a solution to fund this and, and possibly form a JPA with IID. And we also received a study from LAFCO, providing recommendations to our city and also to IID on how we can move forward. So, that's still an ongoing process. You know, these things have been moving for a few years and luckily, we see some, some light at the end of the tunnel with that. So, that's the only commission meeting I had. I want to continue in the spirit of our festivals. It was said earlier that it's such an economic boom to our, our city, but it's an economic boom to our valley, our region, and our state. We have employees coming from all over the state and other states to work in our valley for these festivals and not only just in Indio, in other cities, you know? So, hats off to everyone who has had a piece in making this operation work. You know, I don't believe, you know, 90 years ago, when Indio was incorporated, they thought we would have hundreds of thousands of people in three weekends visiting our city. So, our city maybe wasn't built for these festivals. However, through the council, through the community, through our partners and relationship with Golden Voice and their partners, we're able to make this happen. And, uh, City Manager commandeered a statement from our chief and I like that because I'm a commander now. Making improvements as we go. And we listen to the community every day. We listen to the concerns every day and we also take that into consideration. And that's how we make our festivals better. Nonetheless, uh, community, we also want you to capitalize off these festivals. Our vendors, we also want you to capitalize off these festivals. There were some concerns with some of the visitors, vendors that I received. And my response is, call us, work with us. Your challenge isn't with code enforcement. The challenge is getting you the proper documentation and permits so you can operate in our city. And we want that. And whether you're working with staff, you're working with the City Manager himself, or you're calling a council, a council member individually, we're ready to work with you because we want everyone to capitalize off our festivals here. I did attend one day and I can tell you who any of the performers were. Oh, actually, I can. Blink 182, I can. But, I tell you this, it was an experience. It was an experience. I didn't go to Stagecoach, but these festivals was a great experience and to talk to people from Europe, from Australia, from Mexico, and they know where Indio is on the map and they were happy to take photos by our Indio signs. That's a great feeling. It's a great feeling. And so, like, like I said, just thank you to everyone from our service industry, our law enforcement, our, our fire, who are working behind the scenes to make sure our city is safe, our visitors are safe, and, uh, it was just a great operation. I also attended chela. It was a great event. That's something we, we worked with Golden Voice to make this happen downtown. It's a free event. Not everyone wants to be around hundreds of thousands of people. Some people just want to walk downtown and see some live music, have some food, and it was another great event. And we're looking forward to having that again next year. There'll be some additions and some announcements later on that's going to make that even better event in the future. And I also attended the Economic Conference. A good stuff that we got at the, at the conference. And I couldn't be more happy where, where we're at now in the City of Indio. I think our trajectory is still going up. Our City Manager staff may want to bottom it out a little bit so they can exhale, but like I say, the proof is in the pudding. You know, there's dirt turning all over our city, every corner, from North Gate to the Canopy at Citrus, to our Public Safety Campus, to north of the freeway, to CV Link, to our infrastructure, our landscape, scaping, and beautification projects. The list goes on and we're still working. So, congratulations to our city staff. Thank you to our City Manager and congratulations to the City of Indio. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only commission I had that was active was Sunline Transit Agency, where I'm the chairman. I'm happy to say we have, union negotiations have concluded. We've got a contract with not only the Teamsters, but the ATU on a three-year deal. Fair for them, fair for us. So, that's very exciting. We've been going on for a couple of years, so it was great to get that behind us. We are still looking for a new General Manager, CEO for Sunline, so we are in the middle of looking through applications to be able to hire someone to come in and take over. And then, lastly, on Sunline is, we are always looking for people. So, if you know anybody that's looking for a job to work in any aspect of Sunline, there's multiple opportunities for people there and it's a well-paying job. It comes with benefits and it comes with medical. So, if you know somebody out there that's looking to change careers or go work for Sunline, get online for sunline.org and be able to look at opportunities to go work for Sunline. And then last, I think we all are going to congratulate the concerts. Another three concerts down. I think it's great that we were able to bring the economic development. It does take the whole valley to be able to do it, so it's just not, thank you to our staff or Police Department. Everybody in the city's doing something, from public works to our City Manager was there watching, to our Police Chief, to everyone that comes through. And so, it really taxes the city, so I thank them for all the work they do. And I thank the rest of the other cities and other agencies that help with, work with us. Because Indio might be the host of the concerts, but without the other cities, their hotel rooms, the buses, the other stuff, there would be no Coachella or New Stagecoach. It takes all of us in this valley to be able to put this together. And we have one more, October 6th to the 8th. We'll see how this goes. It's Power Trip, more of a heavy metal with AC/DC and the other, Iron Maiden. I don't know if these people coming in are going to be able to accept the heat. We'll be able to see this, but it should be a great event. Look, I think they're going to build the stadium and put it in, so it should be a great event to be able to go to and bring in some more people off-season. So, congratulations to everyone. Thank everyone for all they do and our community for putting up with all the traffic and everything else for a little while. It's going to be a little quiet, now we got the heat. So, congratulations to all and thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. Mayor Protem, on with me?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have any committee reports tonight. Did we skip number seven, City Manager Reports, or did I fall asleep?
No. He was quick. He did it, yeah.
He did it?
I did, but I failed to mention Food Truck Fridays, so I'm sure you'll pick me up on that.
Well, Food Truck Friday, and I wanted you to give an update to the community on Val San decision for the assessment that they had proposed.
Valley sanitation.
Oh, Valley sanitation.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're going to do your report.
Somebody has to do it.
Okay, thank you. So, I got a kind of a long one today, so hang in there. But this week, I had a meeting with the Desert Healthcare District. We are working with them on an educational campaign on the dangers of fentanyl. They partnered with ABC Recovery and they're doing some presentations at Martha's Kitchen Rescue Mission and they'll be reaching out to some more of our community centers so that we can have some more substantial conversations in our community about this very dangerous drug. I also invited them to come give a quick five-minute presentation for our next council meeting and we'll be helping them do an educational video that we can help share through our social media as well. Also had a meeting with our Assembly Member and his staff and our Housing and Planning Staff regarding housing projects and how we can target more state funding for housing for our veterans and our seniors on fixed income. We're getting our questions together and comments together and we're going to be reaching out to the State's Department of Housing and Community Development next. On Monday, I attended the May Day Rally here across the street from City Hall. We had some of our local organizations that work with our immigrant community come and share some of the local work being done to advance immigrant workers' rights and, and working towards pathways to citizenship for our DACA population and the rest of our undocumented workers in our country. I also attended the ribbon cutting for Villa Hermosa III with Councilmember Holmes. This project includes 100 affordable units for our farmworker population. Many of these units have been filled by families who lived in the previous development at that location previously known as the Fred Young Labor Camp. These are really nice apartments with great management and services for, for the kids and residents by our great, great partners at Coachella Valley Housing Coalition. I also attended the Mobius Conference Earth Session where our Youth Advisory Council Mayor Victoria Tariqas gave a great speech about the environmental crisis at the Salt and Sea and the health impacts on the surrounding communities. She did a really good job and I was really impressed by her public speaking skills, so, great job. Earlier today, we met with Riverside County regarding our point-in-time count on numbers, which will be released to the public this week. And they did thank us for all the work, all of our work to help deal with the region's housing and mental health crisis. They mentioned that we are well ahead of the curve in providing affordable housing options as well as shelter and services for those in need. We did discuss new strategies of making sure we're involving all cities in these efforts and we discussed possibly expanding the CV 200 program through the county or another agency to be able to scale up in a more affordable manner and more urgently deal with our homeless population who have not been, who we have not been able to reach through shelter services. I also attended a briefing for our CAL FIRE team with Lucas Piñón from our Congress, from Congressman Ruiz's office. And we were able to take a tour of the Stagecoach setup and the command post there before doors opened and we were able to see some of the great collaboration happening there between our police, fire, and medical teams and many, many other agencies that are brought in to make sure our festivals are a safe experience for everyone involved. Mr. Piñón also brought a certificate for all of our CAL FIRE staff and brought flags that were previously flown over the White House for each fire chief. So, a big thank you to him for that effort and for that recognition. And thank you as well to Golden Voice and all of our partners for a successful and safe festival season. We really appreciate all the hard work that goes into these amazing shows and all the economic help that comes through that hard work from our partners and all of their staff. We also want to let you know that our new Food Truck Fridays is starting this Friday from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. here in downtown Indio on Bliss and Town Street. So, come support our small businesses and have some fun and good food here in downtown Indio. Also, I wanted to report on the Valley Sanitary District issue that we discussed at our last meeting. We were able to sway the board into denying that proposal and so that has not advanced. There will be no hearing on that Prop 2, I believe it's Prop 218. So, that's been canceled for now. We know there does need to be an increase in the near future because of the need in, in repairing those old pipes and there is some equipment that was in there that does need to be replaced. But we also, you know, I think we disagreed along with the community that the $200 million recycling water project was not immediately necessary and was not worth that investment for all of our community members. So, that has been halted, but we do expect some increase, some other proposal to be coming here soon to deal with all the infrastructure needs there. All right, thank you. And we'll move on to our next item, excusing our Youth Advisory Council. Frida, would you like to be excused?
Yes, please.
All right, we'll see you on Saturday, 7:30 at Indio Badlands.
Yes, thank you.
See ya. Thanks.
Bye.
All right, and we'll move on to our consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull any items here?
I'll make a motion to move it.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Holmes. Go ahead and take a vote.
Plus, zero, or minus?
Plus is approved. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Council. And we'll move on to item 11.1, Approval Resolution Number 10352, approving the deferral of city development impact fees in the amount of 1.4 million to be structured as a residual cash receipts loan. Jesus Gomez, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Jesus Gomez Housing and Awood Services Manager. I always like to have the title read and maybe I could just drop the mic as I told you before, but I would like to instead give you a few details that are including the staff report and go through this brief presentation. This is a chronology of what happened. Well, it's not in order. I do jump ahead in the chronology here because earlier this year in January, the Planning Commission did approve the development of 180 affordable housing unit, units. I have a sore throat, my apologies. To be developed by Pacific West Communities, the Planning Commission approved this project, which means that the developer can move forward with the development. So, what's before you today is not the approval of the project because it has already been approved. The title suggests that we're going to be seeking your approval to defer the development impact fees that would normally be charged to this project. But going back to the, the schedule, so, the Indio Housing Authority, which the council serves as Board of Directors, wearing that different hat, approved an initial land acquisition loan in November of 2022, so just a few months ago. And that allowed the developer to move forward with seeking funding from other sources, which included the county. And the county in January approved a $2 million contribution to the project. These are, these are local funds that go to support the project and the next step of that project financing is to seek tax credits through the state, through the feds, and other financing, like bond financing. So, the developer was able to submit an application to, to the state for these tax credit and bond funds, but was unsuccessful. Those programs are highly competitive and throughout the state, 88 applications were considered. And to give an idea of the competitiveness, only one application in the entire Inland Empire was approved for this funding. You see, what happens is the developer submits an application and because of the highly competitive nature of these programs, a lot of these applications receive the entire 100% of the points possible, but then rely on what they call tiebreakers, which kind of helps these state agencies determine which project has more community benefits, including which project has more local financial support. And so, in, with the denial of their application, the developer went back and did some recalculations and worked with us and is currently working with the county as well to determine, how can they resubmit the application for consideration during the next round of funding, which would be next February 2024? And so, we believe, as well as the developer, that if additional funding is provided by the city, it increases the competitiveness of the application. And that's what the developer is here to do. I'm here just to present some of the facts as stated in the staff report and for you to consider the type of assistance that's being requested. So, what's being requested is a deferral of development impact fees that the city would normally charge a new project such as this in the amount of just over $1.4 million. This is a deferral, not a waiver. So, what, what that means is that instead of the developer paying the $1.47 million in fees upfront where the project is completed, it's deferred, in this case, for a period of up to 55 years. These types of loans are typical for these types of projects with initial payments starting in year one. They're relatively small. I think the first projection would be $22,000 in the first year increasing to more as time goes on. And so, the, the deferral is going to be in the form of a loan earning 3% interest, again, which is typical. In fact, the other housing authority loan from our housing fund that I mentioned was approved in November have similar terms to this. And so, it was structured in the same way. The county's funding was also structured this way. So, again, very consistent to what's done with these types of projects. Another thing that we discussed with the developer and they've agreed to do is to implement a priority leasing and marketing strategy that gives priority to local Indio residents, secondly, to the Coachella Valley residents, and, and then opening it up to, to others. We will implement it in a way that's consistent and to fair housing law and other laws as applicable. So, there may be some, a little bit more looking into on, to what extent we could actually implement that marketing and leasing priorities strategy. And with that, I have the recommendation. I believe the developer did want to have a few minutes to speak under, under public comment for three minutes, but this is our recommendation, that you adopt the resolution.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and go to the developer.
Open the public chair.
Whoa, oh, sorry. Open. No, it's administrative, yeah. Do we have the developer on the line?
In house, yes.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, he's in, he's here in person.
Okay.
Darren Burberry.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you very much for hearing us out today. Darren Burberry and the developer of Pacific West Communities. Jesus, thank you. You did a fantastic job of explaining it. So, last time we were here before you, we didn't even have an approved project, but we got the land acquisition loan from you guys and then January Planning Commission approved the project. Shortly thereafter, we also got a $2 million loan from the county of Riverside. Shortly after that, we submitted for our financing application and as Jesus mentioned, it's a competitive, it's a competitive. It's not, you just submit it for financing, get underwritten and approved. So, this round was probably the most competitive I've seen in years. There's a lot of homeless projects, there's a lot of extremely low-income, very low-income projects being submitted and what happens to those, they go to the top. projects being submitted, and what happens to those, they go to the top. And that's exactly what got funded, a, a project in Palm, Palm Desert, that has a lot more financing behind it, local funding sources, so it goes to the top of the list. The short version is, is there's just not enough funding at the state level to fund every project that's being submitted. And the proof is like Jesus also mentioned, there were over eighty projects submitted. These are all entitled projects, ready to go in various cities through the state, and they're left, you know, waiting another year, maybe even potentially a few years before they actually get funded and are able to break ground. So our housing crisis just keeps getting extended, extended, extended. Now, the only solution is, is to get additional local funding, grants, things of that nature. So that's why we're coming here to you today in a creative way. Many other cities are doing it. A lot of cities don't have redevelopment dollars. There's no other way to provide support unless they give an impact fee loan, and they're structured the way Jesus mentioned is because that's how it affects our tiebreaker score. It can't have any kind of hard loan, it can't have any other creative measures, it has to be a soft residual loan paid out of residual cash. And what that does is it takes our tiebreaker score and increases it. So hopefully with the approval today, I'm also going to be going back to the county, asking for additional funds there. I'm using the next eight months to raise more funding so we ensure this project gets funded come February of twenty twenty-four. We were hoping I'd be here today saying we're breaking ground in the next six months, but we're in this position. So that's why we're here today. I really appreciate the continued support, and I'm here to answer any questions if you need any. No problem.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Burberry?
I, I got them.
Go ahead.
So thank you for coming, and thank you for your investment in Indio. If you don't get the state grant, and it comes up, because it is very competitive, and, and like I said, a lot of the big cities usually have the votes, as you know, San Francisco and other areas because of their population, what's your plan if, if you can't get the other funding from the state?
Well, it's, it's kind of the motto, I don't know, we've been doing this for, my company's been doing it for over twenty years, I've been doing it for fifteen years, it's never give up. There is a project in Temecula I worked on for seven years and built so much funding behind it that we literally broke ground on it a few weeks ago. So we'll never, we won't give up, it'll never, it will never stop, we'll just keep building enough funds to do it. And it's not the other, you know, the state, the other cities don't really have political clout to make it happen. What happens is it, it comes down the project and the merits of it and the financing behind it. So if we're able to build that case and get to that, you know, funding level, we'll get it.
How, how many, you said there was eighty-eight applications, how many did they fund, you know?
It was about thirty-six.
And did they tell you who, who the word, did they score it, so you get everything out?
Everything is all public information. I have the list right here, so that we're able to basically gauge off, you know, what other people are doing, what's that level of, you know, funding that you need. I mean, you know, you guys see Arroyo One and Arroyo Two being built. We got in very quickly. We strategically positioned those projects before the chaos that has ensued, so that's why you're seeing them built today. But that, that's part of what we do, though, we think ahead, and sometimes you're a little bit sidetracked of what happens because you can't predict it. You can't predict who's going to come in and see what happens. All we can do is build a perfect project that gets funded in the long run.
Overall dollar amount, do you know how much it was for all the projects?
Oh, um, I mean, they had, so our set aside in the Inland Empire set aside for this round, there was a hundred and four million in bonds. But the issue is, they, they also provide state credits, so there's federal credits and there's state credits. I would say, I think, Jesus and I looked it up, there was about, out of eighty somewhat projects, there was about eighty of them that needed state credits. What happens is those state credits get depleted in the first round. There's three rounds a year of this financing. So it all got depleted in the first round, and that gets eaten up by the whole state. So whatever's left over kind of goes and trickles down to the set asides, which Inland Empire got just a little chunk. So we'll be ready for it next round, and we'll make sure that we're in a very competitive nature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't know if this, hi, Darren, thank you. We love, we love Arroyo, we love the possibility of this project very much, so, you know, when, when we look at some of these impact fees, however, you know, there's a couple that make me a little nervous in terms of, of deferring, and one is law enforcement facilities, and the other one's is roads and bridges. I mean, how, and maybe this is a question for staff, you know, I, I sure would like to defer these impact fees less those two line items, how does that impact, and, and how would we potentially do that with minimal impact to this?
You know, every dollar is, is extremely important that we're asking here. I'm, so the ultimate goal is, you know, I'm trying to raise more, not just to increase our tiebreaker score, but also to get into the extremely low income, very low income category, and I need to raise another like four or five billion dollars to do it. So it's, it's a tall, tall task to do, that's why I'm starting early on. We just found out about this about a month ago, so I'm, you know, hitting the ground running, trying to build enough money to do that, so every dollar counts, I totally get it, but this is the only way of achieving this without funding coming directly in capital.
Sure.
So if the project doesn't happen, no impact fees are being paid anyways. So I'm just trying to be as creative as possible and not hurt the city's pockets as much as possible.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. I, I thought about that as well, and, you know, I think, in, in my mind, the way I justified it is, we just went to the, to the presentation by the county on economic, what, what the economic state of the county, right? And they mentioned that housing is the most important factor right now, that if we don't continue to build housing, it continues to slow down our economy. So our residents are saying, we need more teachers, right? Well, they're not coming if there's nowhere to live, you know, and these wages that we're looking at here, first time a, a beginning teacher fits into this category. They would be able to rent homes here.
Absolutely.
Senior care is another big need, right? There's no big wages there, they're not making six figures, they're going to qualify for these houses, so. I just really appreciate your work and appreciate the work on it from our planning commission. I watched those meetings, they did a great job in getting this approved, so really appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. I, you know, I, I think anytime there's a loan, there, there's going to be give and take, right? There's always going to be concerns, it's a loan. I mean, if you get a personal loan, there is going to be concerns. However, our world that we live in, we're in the housing crisis, and in order to fulfill some of these housing needs, we have to kind of be, kind of assertive and also innovative when we're moving forward with this. And, you know, it's a loan, it's, might be over fifty-five years to get it back, but some of the funding that we're concerned about, you know, those dollars come from other places, you know, and we talked about the trajectory of our economy in our city. I think we're going to do better, and we're already doing kind of good, and however, we're not going to keep that trajectory moving forward if folks don't have anywhere to live. And, you know, eighty-seven one-bedroom units, you know, I, I see veterans living there, I see students, I see senior citizens, and I, I think that's important right now. And, you know, I appreciate the work that's gone into this, I appreciate the other complexes. And you notice I don't say projects, I say complexes, because looking at the, was it via Hermosa? And Arroyo Crossing, I took a tour there with you. Very, very state-of-the-art, beautiful complexes. These are not apartments and complexes of old, so I, I don't know if anyone has any further comments on this, if you, you know, if you want to move forward or if there's any more discussion, but I'll make a motion if there's no other further discussion.
How about it?
Right, well, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution one zero three five two authorizing the deferral of city development impact fees in the amount of one million four, four hundred seventy-two thousand nine hundred twenty-two in the form of a residual cash receipts loan to Pacific West Communities for the development of Avenue forty-four apartments north of Avenue forty-four and west of Goff Center Parkway on accessory parcel numbers six nine two dash zero six zero dash zero one nine and six nine two dash zero six zero dash zero two zero, and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to prepare and execute the necessary loan agreement documents.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Miller. Go ahead and place your votes.
I think the only thing that bothers me about this, there's eighty-eight projects. The state of California continues to say they need low-income housing, and then they don't put any money into it when there's an opportunity to do it.
Yeah, it's a travesty, it's an, it's an absolute travesty. Yeah, I totally agree.
So here's the city putting money into it to make sure that they can do it. It just, if they're really going to do affordable housing, then put your money up where you're supposed to.
We did just get thirty-eight million.
That's not enough. That's not enough.
No, we are working on getting some more.
We need more.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Everybody vote? All right, motion passes five zero. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Burberry. And we'll move on to item eleven point two, approving the launch of the city's beautification program as Indio Lindo, and presenting is Jose Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Jose Ramirez, management analyst. Today I will be discussing Indio's community beautification program and present a couple of naming options. I will begin with the mission of our beautification program. Our mission is to create a beautiful, clean, and healthy Indio that residents and visitors can take pride in. We aim to achieve this by developing and implementing effective public education and community improvement programs. I will discuss a few of the quality of life programs that are being planned. Community cleanups involve organizing volunteer groups to clean up a designated area in the community. Residential improvements, which involve painting, repairing, or cleaning properties to enhance the appearance and give residents and visitors a better experience. City manager is also working on adding a full-time beautification position to the budget that will be responsible for improving the aesthetics of public spaces. They can enhance the appearance of public spaces such as parks, streets, walls, and buildings. Public education involves providing information to the community about our programs and how they can benefit from them. School promotion slash outreach involves promoting quality of life programs in schools. This could include organizing student volunteer groups to participate in community cleanups. Now let's discuss the benefits of our beautification program on the community. A significant benefit of the beautification program is the enhanced quality of life for residents. Aesthetic improvements such as landscaping, parking, and cleaning sidewalks can make can make neighborhoods more safe and enjoyable to live in. By creating a more visually appealing environment, Indian residents may feel a greater sense of pride in their community. The beautification program can also have a positive impact on tourism in the city. When the city is visually appealing, it becomes more attractive to tourists looking for a destination to visit. This can lead to increased, this can lead to increased revenue for local businesses, job creation, and a boost to the local economy. In addition, tourists who have a positive experience in our city are more likely to recommend the city to others, further increasing our reputation and as a desirable tourist destination. Indio's beautification program will also have a positive effect on the environment. The program aims to inspire residents to take pride in their city and take steps to preserve it and protect it as well. Now that we have discussed the beautification program, let's discuss the naming of our program. We conducted a survey on social media from March twenty-seventh to April tenth, where residents and members of our community had a chance to vote for their favorite name out of five options. The options included Indio Lindo, Keep Indio Beautiful, Keep Indio Vibrant, Bonito Indio, and I Love Indio. After two weeks, these were the final results. Indio Lindo was the winner with thirty-seven percent of the votes, and Keep Indio Beautiful was second with twenty-eight percent of the votes. In conclusion, city staff recommends that Indio Lindo be the formal name for the city's beautification program. Since that is what our residents voted for, we also presented these findings to our Sustainability Commission and received their blessing as well. However, we are open to any suggestions that the council may have for the naming of the program or the program itself. Please let me know if you have any input, suggestions, or questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. I did want to point out that this has been an effort that was worked on by our staff, and I remember hearing that sometimes we had volunteers that would show up and say, hey, how can we help? And we didn't have projects lined up, right? Or faith, faith-based groups that might want to help out, and we, we would have to go out of our way to find those projects, so this is a good way to streamline those efforts, have projects ready to go, and have that outreach capability to our students and other organizations that are willing to help out, so I think this is going to be a great impact on our community, so thank you for your work on this. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are there going to be funds allocated for the program?
There was some in the current fiscal year, and as we will present the budget at the next meeting, there'll be a little bit more. We have a community improvement aide, so it's a worker that's gone out in public works. We'd like to move that person, so it's not a net add, but move that person specifically to this program, so that's some additional funding as well. But we'll discuss that during the budget, and you can add and subtract as you, as you see fit, but we'll need to fund this promotional items and, and getting the word out, as well as supplies from paint to other materials we'll need to do the beautification.
And how many responses did we receive?
It was slightly over a hundred, I think it was a total of a hundred and twelve.
I think this is great, it's wonderful. Now we can, we can, especially with fundings, we can create the programs and, and, and really create that kind of environment, that community, you know, and I think maybe this is something we can do in Earth Day. I always thought about getting the kids involved in the grammar school or elementary school levels, right? Maybe around Earth Day or something, and, and this is something, you know, maybe each one of us can take an elementary school and, and go and speak at, at these classes to, to get them excited and interested at that level so that it also grows organically, but thank you very much, this is great.
Thank you.
Good asker. Go ahead.
So on the program itself, how, how will you pick, how will the, the projects be picked and, and going through? Do you have like a game plan, like starting in a certain location, work your way around, or is it be as they come to you?
Yes, so our plan is to maintain a calendar at least ninety days out, and on our website, we're going to launch an area where members of our community, residents, they can actually apply for either a neighborhood cleanup, a painting project, but if we don't have any through there, then we'll just decide on what we see, like through needs of the community.
And, and how often will we be doing these projects?
The goal is to have a project at least once a month.
Once a month, okay. That makes sense, and, and we've reached out to like our, our schools, because, you know, our Shadow Hills has a turf grass and landscape program, we have four H in, in Indio High School, they can be able to help with the agriculture, and then, you know, we have some other opportunities, I think, to be able to utilize some of our churches and some of our other groups that continue to want to support us. So I think it's a great program, I look forward to, hopefully we can get some volunteers and some good programs going to be able to start it. Once people see some initiative and see some changes, then hopefully other people will jump on board, so thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
I have one question. With these funds, if, because let's say I know there's some senior residents out there that might not be able to maintain their grass or their homes, since these are public funds, would we still be able to help people, people's homes, in that sense?
If, if we can deem that there is a public purpose and receive their permission, and I think in most instances we'll be able to, there may be some, whether it be the scope is too large, that may be some question, and we confer with the city attorney on each of those, but the ones that we're talking about, painting their wall, it might be a private wall, but it faces a public right of way, we would make that public justification.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'm thinking, this also needs to be like a mindset, so in addition to specific programs, it's a mindset of people don't, not only don't throw your trash, but pick it up. So you're walking, you're going to the park, you're on your way to the car, parking lots. I've never seen so many cups and wrappers on a parking lot in my life, you know, and just, just have that mindset of picking things up, keep, you know, keep it, keep it beautiful.
Do like a little social media push on there.
I mean, I think, I think there's two, two angles to this, so I think this is.
In Texas and, and New Mexico where I worked, the slogan was Toss No Mas, you know, quit, quit littering, and it, and it's been ingrained for the kids for thirty, forty years.
Wow.
Also, a call I'll just share, to your point, is, you know, any of us as residents here in Indio can look at a piece of trash in a parking lot or whatever it might be and, and say, somebody ought to do something about that. And then you can sit back and say, why am somebody? And if each of us do our part, and we can, I was going to use the word brainwash, but we can encourage and support this thought that this is a beautiful community, we each have a role to play with our own property, and helping others, over time, this will be a significant effort that will make a difference.
Agreed. Thank you.
And also to piggyback on that and those, those comments, you know, for us who have been here for a long time, we know where our city's been, and we know where, where we're at now, and we've come a long way, and, and part of this, because of the community, and it's generational, so when you work with our students and our youth, they go home and they take those, those, those traits back to their, their homes. So this is a good, another vice for us to work on keeping our community clean and beautiful, and, you know, we just had a great conversation on how if you just travel about the city, it's still Indio, but it's a different energy, looks a lot better, it's neater, and we have to keep telling our residents, it's your community, the parks are yours, you know, the infrastructure is yours. You know, I have pet peeves with, you know, sc- You know, I have pet peeves with, you know, scare marks in the road or graffiti. You know, it's our city. So we have to teach the next generation that upkeep. And this is a great program that we're working on. And if there's no further, council member, excuse me, Mayor Protim, it's yours.
I just have one more comment. I think one of the challenges that we run into throughout our community is the lack of enough trash bins throughout the community. Even if we were wanting to be that good Samaritan and pick up the trash in our area, you know, where is the nearest trash can? And I know a couple of years ago, we got those big-belly trash cans. I'm not sure where they were located. But is there anything preventing us from continuing to apply for grants for the trash cans to have more of them throughout the entire community? Because I think that's really going to be what pushes this forward.
It's an excellent point. I know we have a grant for Jackson, have some big bellies coming along Jackson north of the railroad. But throughout the community, we need that. The mayor and I spoke, even the pathway to the festivals, for example, it would be a good opportunity to have some of those trash cans and other amenities to help folks as they visit. Listed in the program, Jose referred to it quickly, but the trash bins, and a lot of these are on private property, but we have photos of homeless reaching into the trash bins. We have photos of a trash bin that's overflowing with trash falling down on the side. Every one of those trash bins should be in an enclosure that's locked, that has a top. That's what you see in other communities. That is not good enough for Indio. We need to do better. And so funding has been aside through the mid-year budget. You appropriated some funds for us to assist businesses to meet that expectation and to lock up that trash and to keep it out of the sight and out of view of the community. So related to your comment, are the trash enclosures and the big bellies? Yes.
And include little doggy bags on the side, please.
God, that's trash too.
I know, but I want a little doggy bag.
You know, this is kind of taking on a life of its own. But what if you need to do a contest? Again, I'm going back to starting things out at that elementary school level or whatever, you know? So maybe we've got selfies of people picking up trash or something, or the kids. And I don't know, maybe it's Indio swag or gift certificates to a restaurant. I don't know what the prize is, but it'd be kind of neat at some level. Make it fun and, you know, have a monthly contest for something.
I think I have the suggestion, you know, some of our schools and clubs adopt roads.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good way to also keep it, you know? You know, because it's not hard to grab a bag and throw your own trash away, you know? I love having some artwork on some new trash bins and those things. But every trash bin that we have around the city, it also has to be emptied.
Emptied and cleaned.
Exactly. So, you know, I guess it's a balance, how we move forward. But I think the overall push and energy in our city is Indio Lindo. Keep it clean. Keep it beautiful. Keep it vibrant, all that stuff. Because like I mentioned earlier, there's development going on in every corner of the city. Infrastructure looks nice. Landscape looks nice, and we want to keep it that way. And there's more to come. There's more minerals coming, and we want to keep it that way. So.
But in the trash cans, as we go through them, we do have to keep them clean because of the homeless to get into them and all the other stuff that overflow. I mean, sun lines, we clean as we go through. We clean the bus shut just in a circle every day. If we can get to them, we go through and do it. That's the same thing that's going to have to happen there, or we'll just have a bigger mess because people just throw the stuff out. So we're going to have to go back in and clean it, clean the top, do the other stuff. And then at the same time, if we're going to talk about, I think it's a good idea that we have these different groups come through. As we have four H, we have some of these other groups that are always looking for money. Maybe them cleaning up, and we give them a donation out of some of the money we have from Golden Voice, from the fines. Give them five hundred dollars to the wrestling team or to the four H club to come in to go out and do something. Have them clean up an area, and we'll donate to their nonprofit at the school or something. I give them incentive, not only to go out and clean up, but also to help out and to be able to help themselves at the same time.
Is our community services commission involved in this?
Sustainability was, but we certainly can. And sometimes there's an overlap there. So we can invite them to participate as well. And, you know, Jose's email's up there. The idea of Adopt a Park, Adopt a Roadway, any volunteers. We've solicited volunteers and have a handful. We've had a few churches step forward. We want that active list of volunteers and an active list of projects to the point that we match them up. And if we do it right, rather than some of the cleanups we did last year, as successful as they were, we might have one staff member there to kind of facilitate. But this is a community-driven, hopefully a lot of youth, organizational-based driven program. And that's the goal, is get them involved. They'll take better care of it if they're a part of cleaning it up.
One thing we've been thinking about at my work too is how do we make some, especially with the youth? How do we make something fun, but also include the community service part of it, right? So we do a lot of hiking. So we're thinking, let's take them on a hike on the way back. We have bags, and we pick up trash on the way back, and that way we clean up that hike, right? So how do you mix that fun with the community service part for our youth?
It's a great idea. T-shirts, in my experience, you know, a t-shirt or a hat, something like that where they go away, where they feel like they took something. This other idea where you have like the cheerleaders at the high school wanting to raise money. We say, well, if you'll clean up Indio Boulevard from here to there, we'll give you a five hundred dollar stipend. And we provide the bags and the picker-uppers and the safety vests. And we don't even have a staff member involved. It's community-driven.
Yeah.
And they could contact the city. We have supplies, and we have that good stuff. We have bags and things to pick them up. You know, and growing up here, and Mayor Protim could probably second this, a certificate, gift certificate to Del Taco number seven will suffice. Right? Or Nagos, right? And so those are good ideas, and I'm just happy that this moved forward. So if there's no further, I'll make a motion that city council approve and launch the city's beautification program as Indio Lindo.
We have a motion from Councilmember Furman and a second from Councilmember Miller. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, to you and your team, and thank you, council, for all the good engagement here.
And Mayor, if I can, I mentioned Nagos. A lot of these youngsters may not remember Nagos. But Nagos was our old Del Taco right here downtown. And so kind of similar menu, just a little twist on it. So some of us remember that.
Nagos Twin Kitchen.
There it is.
They had burgers on one side and burritos on the other.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. History lessons. All right, we'll move on to item twelve point one, public hearing, approval of fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Annual action plan is necessary to receive an allocation of community development block grant funds in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Mr. Jesus Gomez.
Jesus Gomez, Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. So every year, we submit an application to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development to receive an allocation of community development block grant funds or CDBG funds. Next year's fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four allocation will be in the amount of eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. And you might recall that March fifteenth, we were here before you discussing possible uses of the funds. The council gave us direction to proceed with those recommendations for further consideration and approval tonight. As part of that process, we were required to make available a draft action plan that was available for a thirty-day public review period from April to yesterday. It allowed the members of the public to review our proposal, our action plan, and provide comments and input. And as of today, we have not received input on the action plan. This would be the final of two public hearings. Again, the one we held in March was the first one. This would be the final one. It's part of a process that we identify with HUD, and HUD requires us to follow. Now, the following slide will be the list of projects that you saw previously. Nothing changed, so the community, and you have seen those before. And just to reiterate what I said last time, it's consistent with what the council had asked us to do, which is try to fund programs that keep the funds in-house or it's administered by staff. And so we've done that, as I'll go over briefly. And also, the nonprofits, although they're receiving slightly lower funding compared to the last couple of years, it's really providing funding to them as we were providing before the pandemic. We were able to give them additional money the last couple of years because we have that additional CARES Act money that was used to address the pandemic and COVID- nineteen. That money's now gone, and so we're going back to funding them at the original levels and using really the fifteen percent allocation of the grant for those services. So we're trying to maximize and provide as much benefit as we can in funding to our local nonprofits. And this is what I showed you last time. We do have administration. We have funding to our nonprofits, including Martha's Village and Kitchen, the Rescue Missions Food Program, Find Food Bank. We also have administration and also our senior centers meal program, as I've listed there. We also have the ADA curb ramp improvements in two of our neighborhoods, mainly on the north side, which is Kenner, the Kenner Street neighborhood, as well as the Jewel Track neighborhood, as referenced here. This is a Jewel Track neighborhood. And as I mentioned before, those dots there are the curb ramps that would be addressed. And when we complete those over the, you know, by the end of the year, that will complete all of the infrastructure work that's needed in that neighborhood. And so that is something worth noting. The other neighborhood where we've done a lot of infrastructure improvement is a Jewel Track neighborhood, generally located behind and surrounding the DMV on Jackson Street. And those are the spots that was recommended by Public Works and will be addressed if funding is, if we're approved for funding and submitted the application, if we will. The next step would be that we submit the application over the next couple of weeks and wait for HUD's approval. And then we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Any comments or questions for staff before we open up the public hearing? Councilmember Miller, I believe you suggested last time we talked about this, that we supplement the funding going to the nonprofits with general fund funds up to the pandemic levels, right?
And I do agree with that. I was going to wait till after the public hearing, but I do believe that we should fund it in at least fifty thousand for each of the ones and take it out of the general fund money. It's just supporting other operations that we'd have to do ourselves or we have to do, and they're all our partners and able to support, not only our seniors, but our community as a whole, to be a better community. So I think we need to give them more funding to be able to provide the resources to our residents here in the city of Indio.
We can have that conversation.
Yes.
Yep.
We will.
Yep.
Yes.
Exactly.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. First of all, thank you for your work on this. This is great, great stuff. And this is something that I brought up in previous years and something that I'll keep bringing up until we at least have a conversation about it. Because I believe that housing and urban development, it has to meet a special criteria, you know, in some of these communities that have challenges. And I brought up the concept of ring doorbells or doorbell alarms, not alarms, but the cameras for some of these communities because there is a lot of good work going on, but some communities still have challenges and public safety challenges. And there's programs out there that work alongside the police department. If there is a crime or infraction, that they will work with them and provide them that footage. And it doesn't have to be ring doorbell. That's just the brand. There are certain types that are not hardwired. I believe some may work on Wi-Fi. There are Wi-Fi programs for people who can't afford that stuff. So I just want to look at that and have a conversation. It may not be here, it may be budget time. But we do have certain communities that we do keep data when it comes to crime and property crimes in the world we live in. And this is probably a different conversation. Property crimes are on the rise. That's just what we're dealing with now. And I'm happy that we have our plate readers in our city. But that's just a concept that I like to have a conversation about. So thank you for your work, and you know, Tim, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. I do have one public comment here from Kimberly McKinney from CB Rescue Mission. Hi, welcome.
Thank you for letting me speak. Excuse me, I haven't been talking. Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Mayor and the council members. I'm here tonight to talk a little bit about CBDG. I'm sorry, my lips are sticking together. I'd like to have you guys look at us as in a different light. We're a homeless shelter, but we're so much more. We provide job training. We have a two thrift store, one thrift store that's being built. There'll be a job training opportunities. We've got a commercial laundry facility being built right now that will also provide not only our clients, but also people from outside to get trained in laundry facilities, commercial laundry facilities, which are hospitals, casinos, restaurants, which is huge in our valley. We're an entertainment community. We also have the best track record of graduating people with outcomes. So we have huge numbers of who we take care of with food, clothing, and shelter. But we also do the job training. We get them housed. So every year, and a lot of you have attended our graduations, we graduate a hundred to a hundred and fifty people a year that were formerly homeless. They leave with a job, a house, an apartment, and usually savings because while they work at the mission, eighty percent of their money is saved. And we use rapid rehousing or other funding to help them get the first month or the second month or six months, whatever they need. Sometimes it's even two years funding. So I want, I'd just like you to consider while you're looking at your budget, I have some dollar amounts in mind, but I think that I sort of changed my mind last night because we are such a resource for you. We do so much that you're not using us the right way. We're not partnering the right way. Your outreach team comes to us with five to six people that they pull off the streets. If their outreach team doesn't have food, clothing for somebody that they're working with that's on the street, they come to us, and we give it to them for free. I mean, that's what we do. We are part of Indio. We have a specific need of, you know, I mean, mission of taking care of the homeless, and we're successful at it. And we seem like, CDBG is really great program. And of course, any money that you guys give us is just, you know, a blessing. But it's program-based or project-based. And we want you guys to look at us as an asset and a partner instead of each year coming up with a new program. And the staff has to work really hard to, you know, get the information out of the nonprofits. They have to monitor us. They have to do reports. It's a lot of work for the staff, which I think we can relieve, at least in CB, in the Guteville Valley Rescue Missions side, looking at us as a different way to fund us. So I just want to consider that while you're looking at your budgets, So I just want to consider that while you're looking at your budgets, save the money for some of the other nonprofits, or put it in your street projects. I think CDVG, personally, looking at your street projects, impact your community much more than they do the money that you give to us through that program. I mean, I mean, you'll look better to your residents, is what I'm trying to say. But we do appreciate your funding. But I just wanted to, I just had this idea, I have all sorts of facts and figures I was going to talk to you about, but basically, I want to be your partner, not a project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, do we have any other public comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do you have any discussion by council?
You know, I think she makes a very good point, actually, right? Because all the, I'm just kind of going through this in my head, all the backup, all the statistics, all the everything that, whether it's a rescue mission or anyone else, has to produce to accept that money and put it in different spots. So, interesting. And so if, just thinking out loud, so if you look at Councilmember Miller's concept of pulling some money from the general fund, which I'm not 100% on completely yet, but if we were to do that and spend the money in our neighborhoods, I guess I really like us to support our neighborhoods, you know, our center section of town where the need is tremendous. And so it's a shift, it's a mindset. Again, I'm talking out loud here, but it's a shift in a mindset of how we spend the funds that we have, and then potentially how we partner, or how we support some of the other organizations without making them spend weeks trying to come up with the statistics and the percentages in order to program those dollars. Just my thought for the night.
That sounds great. Maybe for the next year's plan, can get that going?
Certainly be much simpler for everyone, particularly if there is some contribution. We do have the Golden Voice money that you spoke to previously that could go and perhaps assist. And we can research, I know we've talked about this before, Councilman Furman's brought up the cameras, where we're doing the infrastructure and the census tracts where it's eligible for that. If eligible for those, we could consider some amount of that money to go for cameras in those areas, you know, as we do the streets and so forth. So maybe that's something to develop over the long run in these plans. Maybe it's only one of these entities, say Find Food Bank, the others receive general fund money, so there's not as much paperwork.
Yeah.
And we have only one of them have to do the paperwork, and we rotate that every year. $24,000 in the paperwork that comes with it may not match up, may not be worth it. So we'll reevaluate. This is the second hearing, and looking for your support for as it's presented, but we can make some quick modifications right now or plan for the future.
Plan for the future.
Sounds good. Something else I mentioned last year, I know the folks at both Find and Martha's Village and the Rescue Mission, that, you know, more assistance from the city of Indio, I think, could be a match for other communities to step up as well. So it's kind of a creative way, and we met and discussed that. I predict if it's coming from the general fund, you know, we stand up, maybe it's the mayors of all the communities and say, you know, we'll put in $25,000 of our general fund money if each of you do. And now each of these nonprofits are better off because we've leveraged more support, and frankly, it's more fair to the taxpayers of Indio if all of the cities in the valley participate at the same level rather than just us, or us the most of everybody else.
Yeah. Gotcha. Well, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Really appreciate it. Any other comments? Good to go?
Then I'll, yeah, I'll prove the fiscal year 2023-2024 annual action plan for the community development grant funds in the amount of $876,226, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary agreements, documents, certifications necessary to implement and manage the program.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Furman. Go ahead and vote, please. Motion passes. Thank you, staff. Thank you for your comments. Thank you to our council. Let's see, next we'll move on to public comments for items not on the agenda. I have one here from Manpreet Gina Gill.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. My name is Manpreet Gina Gill, and we applied for cannabis licenses in India. I'm a minority woman business owner with years of retail and regulated industries experience. We are requesting that we be given a chance to be interviewed by the city council for the five licenses being awarded, not just the top applicants for the five licenses. I have a track record of donating 10% back to the community and want to bring that to Indio. We hope that we will be given this opportunity, as we will add value to Indio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the appeal period over?
I don't think the appeal period is not over. I don't believe. It's not over yet.
Do you want to comment on that?
I would just make the comment, there are some appeals that are pending and so forth. There were lengthy, thorough interviews, as well as a thorough application process. I don't think any of us ever envisioned, because there are 13 applicants, that the city council would conduct 13 hours of interviews. I don't think that was ever the indication or contemplation in the ordinance, the application guidelines. So that's why the recommendation is as it was. Pending these appeal hearings, we'll be able to present a final recommendation. But again, I just don't know if that's the best use of your time to regurgitate the same information that the previous interviews already did. If you're willing to do 13 hours of interviews, that's something to contemplate as we present our recommendation to.
No, it's not what I was advocating for, just to let the speaker know that the only avenue that is available to them at this point is to find an appeal.
And we're currently going through the appeal process on a couple of the applications.
Right, the speaker today, if that, if they want a chance, that's the only avenue available at this time.
And, you know, the request that there be more coming forward is being made by, I think, every single one of those.
Right.
So the hearing officer is going to be hearing that argument, and will be making a recommendation.
Okay.
And so this request is for the presentations coming to council.
Yes.
During our council meeting.
So under the guidelines that the city council approved, the city manager takes the top applicants and sends them to the city council for interviews and final determination. The city manager looked at how many licenses were available and chose the top applicants from the Phase Two and Phase Three process that met that number. Some of the applicants are challenging that, and we'll see what the hearing officer has to say.
And so currently, we'll have five, the top, we're giving five licenses, and the top five are the ones that are going to be presented to council.
That was the city manager's determination that is being challenged right now. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
She has to appeal if she wants to challenge.
Yes, I think they know.
Well, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
They know, you guys are aware that you need to appeal through the process, right?
Yes, we have filed the appeal. When the city posted the way, it would be, it was that the top applicants would get a chance to get a city interview, but if you're only getting five applications for five licenses, then it's not interviews, a presentation. So that's where we're kind of like, either it should be top 10, top seven, over 90%, it just, those five are just going to be presentations, not interviews, so.
An excellent argument to make to the hearing officer.
Right, we just want to make sure you're about the appeal.
Yeah, we're doing that, and we just wanted you to hear that also, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
But it's public comment, so they have the right to speak.
Any other public comments?
Yes, Mayor, I have one on Zoom, and I have two in person.
Okay.
Let's get the person on Zoom, and that would be Alex. Alex, you have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Alex. I don't understand why we have not removed the signs calling ourselves the city of sustainability when we continue to approve gas stations and cater to the auto industry. I mean, seriously, what is making us sustainable? Just because we put out a few trash cans? Why do these little things matter when the biggest issues of climate change will still end up swallowing us whole at the end? The number one cause is transportation, and you guys, along with Timothy and his engineers, continue to make way for this type of car infrastructure, which also results in preventable deaths. Indio needs to actually go green and be sustainable. What you're doing is affecting people's lives in many negative ways. With all the gas stations you approved, the air quality is so bad, and there are dangerous chemicals that leak onto the surrounding houses, causing families with children to get lung, brain, and kidney damage. How can you go on as if nothing, knowing that you approved this? Are you not supposed to decline projects that are bad idea and harm for the public? Especially in a climate crisis, perhaps? I am shocked, to say the least. This is exactly why all the environmental stuff you talk about is all just talk that's been going on for years. Think about how the choices you make really affect our lives. You have already made it clear that you work for corporations, not the people. If a gas station asked to be built right across the street from one, you would approve it. If the police asked for even more of the entire city budget, you would approve it. Anything they ask for, you blindly give to them, and yet crime continues to rise. Maybe the system is not working. Even if they asked for the new controversial robot dogs, I truly think you would approve that, too. Defund the police and fund real solutions. Also, why is the police in charge of traffic for the festivals? It's not being handled well at all, and they don't need the horses there to just stand around. The council member in charge of Sun Bus is obviously not doing anything to improve the bus service, and it's awful to live here without a car. Since it's Mental Health Awareness Month, what is being done about it, improving it in Indio? We don't have enough parks with real gardens, and we need more pocket parks with easy access. Please don't promote something you're not even trying to help these issues. It just makes us look silly. I mean, seriously, all these issues that we have, where's the social justice and the climate justice? All these issues that need fixing, yet we do nothing about them just because it's not profitable? The all the money to police to protect property and the same corporations that kill us. I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments. We have two more in person.
Yes, Christopher Martinez, followed by Stephen W.
Mr. Martinez.
Good, good evening. My name is Christopher Martinez. I'm a longtime resident of Indio and also a cannabis applicant. I'm here following up on the document production we had, that we need in order to have a fair and transparent appeals process. We're still waiting on substantial information that we originally requested back in March, 13 of March. Ultimately, we were wanting that information to determine whether an appeal has made sense for our case. We understand that application packets take time to process, but we also requested a copy of the questions that were asked during Phase Three, the actual questions that we had to respond to. We just, part of that record request from March 13 was that we received a copy of those questions, and we still haven't received those. We've had, we've sent several follow-ups regarding our request and details specific to the appeals process with no response. We've offered to be available for a conference call to make things easier, but I have not received a response. Ultimately, this is becoming a pattern with our experience in this process. I have an email that dated back from August where I asked information about zoning that I never received a response to. While other applicants were able to request a zoning verification letter that was required for your application, they were able to submit and receive a response within 24 hours or the same day. We need records pertaining to our scoring, regarding the scoring methodology and process, like what is stated to have been provided to the panelists as separate attachments. This list can be found in the city's panelist instructions that are on the city's website that include iPad with a Survey Monkey scoring program, instructions for cannabis interview panel, scoring cheat sheet, a summary of each application, which I would, I would be concerned about how would they develop our summary of our application, what information was there, and did that have a negative impact on our interview, as well as the map, showing the map where the location, the proposed site is at. Did that have an impact on our scores or not? Was that something that we had provided, or was it developed by staff? We've done our best to follow procedure, be patient, and maintain professionalism as we seek the information for our appeals. We still have the same concern that I had when we originally came with this matter. Will we have the requested and pertinent information that we need to have in our appeals hearing? We feel that our only option left is to submit additional public records requests and ask for counsel for direction. We've also, I've also sent a summary of this experience, the communications and what records we're requesting, to city council for their review. I just hope that I could get some guidance and direction on how to address this matter most appropriately, so we could have a fair and transparent appeals process. I really appreciate your time and attention on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, are we able to provide those questions to the interviews, for the interviews?
I'll defer to the city attorney, who's been compiling all that information, and most of it has been provided, so the comment, there's been no response, is not true. But I invite Mr., I think it was Ramirez or Martinez, to speak with the city attorney and talk through what's outstanding. I'm not aware of what is.
You know, I'm not aware that we haven't responded to the questions. I'll follow up on that one, because I don't know that off the top of my head. We have been working with each of the applicants, as stated in our guidelines, to ensure that if we're releasing a copy of their application, we're not including trade secret information, confidential security information. We sent a copy of each application to the applicants themselves, asked them to identify sections that they had concerns about with confidentiality. We're still going through that process. We got extensive requests for redactions back from each of the applicants. I'm not aware how someone else's application affects the ability to discuss your own scoring. And then the only other thing I would add, you know, these hearings are set in front of the hearing officer. If an appellant feels that they haven't been given the necessary records for the appeal, that would seem to be an excellent thing to bring up to the hearing officer, for the hearing officer to resolve. But I'll follow up on the questions issue.
And, you know, the copy of other applications, I think it is pertinent information, just because if you can prove that, hey, this applicant has this score, I have the same thing, but I got a lower score, then that's usable for their.
Potentially. Phase Three is an evaluation of the interview only, so, you know, essentially, my question has been, the application was not part of Phase Three, you're challenging Phase Three, I don't know how the application would be relevant. But again, I think it's a good thing for the hearing officer to resolve, not something to resolve at the dais during public comment.
Thanks. And we have another speaker, Stephen W., I believe.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. My name's Stephen Viatic, owner and operator of Reefer Madness, a very successful dispensary and lounge in Palm Springs. We were recently voted number one in the Coachella Valley by CB Independent Readers. My store contributes heavily and responsibly to the Palm Springs and Coachella Valley community. After spending years in the cannabis business, especially as it relates to educating patients about cannabis medical benefits for specific ailments, I decided to expand to Indio. My plan is to relocate my home to, from Palm Springs to Indio to be even closer to the planned new location, and to both shepherd the success of the new business, as well as develop relationships and ways to better contribute to the Indio community and the city council's strategic goals. I plan to stabilize this multi-tenant location on Indio Boulevard that has suffered from excessive tenant turnover, and the location will benefit tremendously from the placement of my business. I'm here today to request two things. First, that Phase Four interviews with the city council be expanded to also include those of us that felt so strongly about our value to the community that we paid $3,600 for an appeal. Secondly, I request that you please consider my observations that the macro-level evaluation criteria used has not produced the optimal outcome that city council intended. While I did well in Phase Two with a 99% score, to my surprise, I did not make the top five for Phase Three staff interviews, and therefore have not been invited to present to city council. Furthermore, we were asked not to bring visuals to the staff interviews. Also, the process missed my greatest asset I bring to the city and community, local ownership. I am the 100% owner of Reefer Madness, meaning that all proceeds from my two locations, that's Palm Springs, and that would be Indio if licensed, would remain in the Coachella Valley. There are no local partner buy-ins to meet specific scoring requirements, because I'm already the 100% owner who is local since 2019. I don't think this is the case with all other top-scoring applications. As 100% hands-on owner, I can develop my employees for success, coordinate with my landlord and with the city, and produce major gains for the building I occupy, as well as the entire six-building complex. I would, I would increase business for other tenants in the complex as well, all while working with the city on the strategic plan goals and needs of the Indio community. There is so much I can help achieve for the city and the community that I plan to share during city council interviews. Thank you for your time and consideration of this.
Thank you.
I have no other comments, Mayor.
No other comments? Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting, and our next meeting is going to be on May 17. Thank you.
Happy Mother's Day, everyone.